Welcome everybody to the July 25, 2017, Special Building Board Meeting. The board meeting tonight on the agenda is swearing in of our new trustee, trustee John Rossi, water improvement project, which will be printed by Troy and Mark from Sand Tech Engineering, a hearing on the Ethics Committee requirements awarding the Montgomery Street Astor bids, a peddler's permit application, and a bleaching memorandum agreement, plus any other business. So I'd like to start that meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I have the distinct pleasure of introducing our new trustee, John Rossi, who joined the board and was effectively sworn in officially on July 14th. But today is a ceremonial event by our honorable Judge Sanchez.
I, John Rossi.
You solemnly swear.
Do you solemnly swear?
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And faithfully discharge your duties.
And faithfully discharge your duties.
Of village trustee.
Of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Next on the agenda is, as I mentioned, a water improvement project, which this project started three years ago in earnest, and has been developing over a long period of time. The water improvement project is really geared towards addressing the water issues that we have with our old pipes in the village. And this project addresses the area on Route 9, Montgomery, Platte, and Livingston, and which has a big impact on our water supply. So with that, we have our engineering here today, Troy and Mark from Sand Tech Engineering, which will lead us in review.
Thank you for the invite. Troy, which is our prosecutor at Sand Tech, project manager. Mark Demp from Sand Tech, senior principal. We brought Mark along tonight because he knows how to run the projector and the pointer. As the mayor kind of introduced this project, it really has been an ongoing project for the village for several years, even before Sand Tech was engaged, contracted by the village. In fact, in 2014, a previous engineer did a preliminary study of the village's system and identified several projects slated for improvement. And again, this is due to the fact that the village is an old village, and a lot of the water pipes in the ground are very old, over 100 years old. So in 2014, a previous engineering firm came up with an initial review. Sand Tech was engaged in 2015 to do an actual computer analysis of the whole system, village-wide. As you can see up on the first slide here, this is basically the system. Green lines are basically the large water mains, the main transmission lines, 10-inch, 12-inch, this is Mulberry Street. So here's Route 9 right here, Fairgrounds right over there, and Northern Duchess Hospital up there in that corner. Mark, why don't you go to the next slide? So basically what Sand Tech did was we produced a model that analyzed the village-wide system. And it basically confirmed what the previous engineering firm had identified as far as the most critical project. And what you see in this slide here is the first phase project, which was deemed the most critical village-wide for several reasons, which we'll get into. You can see here is a new proposed 12-inch water main on Montgomery Street from Market Street up near the Springbrook split. Livingston Street out to Beach, Chestnut to Mulberry, and then Platt Avenue to Mulberry as well. These lines are all over 100 years old. And the water main on Route 9 is only a 6-inch main. And the water mains on the three side village streets are all 4-inch mains. Current standards call for 8-inch minimum water mains. So right at that point, you can see, forgetting about the age of the system, that the system is really antiquated and undersized for modern water supply. So here's some of the whys of this project. I think pictures say a thousand words. These are portions of the water main that were recovered or cut out as part of repairs. The village over the, you know, last years have been going through repairs, fixes of water main breaks, things like that. So that's an increase in cost to the village. And it's obviously going to continue to get worse as the system gets older. But you can see from this line here, I believe that's a 6-inch, now maybe that's a 4-inch line from Chestnut. You can see the tuberculation on that. And so the actual capacity of that pipe has probably decreased to, I don't know, 30%, something like that. Here's another example. I think that's a 6-inch line on Route 9. Again, you can see the condition of that line and the tuberculation. This line here was also, I think, from Platt. And you can see the cracking. This is the pipe looking from the top view. So these are just some fine examples that the Water Department was able to provide as part of the documentation during their repairs. Okay, so getting back to the slide, the why, the system's over 100 years old. You know, obviously you can see from these situations, as well as the fact that the pipes are small in diameter, there's capacity issues, there's pressure issues, and there's fire flow issues. In addition to these issues, you have water quality issues. When you have tuberculation such as this, that can cause a degradation of the water quality, as well as other issues. The how, I kind of explained that. We're going to replace the line, the 6-inch line on Montgomery Street, from, actually from Market Street to Springbrook Avenue with a new 12-inch line, 12-inch ductile iron line, cement line. We also included as part of this project, as I said before, Livingston, Chestnut, and Platt. Again, those streets were identified as really requiring upgrades. Mark, if you could just go back to the previous slide. Another reason which we didn't list on that last slide, the importance of this project, of course is important for all the businesses along Route 9 in this area, as well as the residents on these streets. But something that can be missed is something we call resiliency. Right now, the Duchess County Fairgrounds and Northern Duchess Hospital is basically served by a 10-inch line down Mulberry Street that comes directly from the village's tank up here. Right now, if there happened to be some type of break, for whatever reason, on Mulberry Street main, then there really is insufficient water to get out through the Route 9 main. So basically by, if you go back to, go to the next slide, Mark. This creates a loop, a 12-inch main that connects to the 10-inch main back to the tank. And then these interconnections that go through to Mulberry Street, basically creating a system that is looped and redundant. So this is very important for the village as a whole, even outside of these streets that are directly impacted by the improvements.
So just to make sure you know too, one of the items that we looked at, we first were just looking right around this particular location, this project as Phase 1. Once we got into it, it became really apparent that we needed to model the entire system for the village so that we could actually phase and understand what would happen in the future. We did a series of what-ifs. If we did not change, or if we upgraded this piece versus that piece, basically it gave us a nice concise way to progress projects in the future as they become necessary or funds become available to address the issues in the future. So you have a model set to go that we can do, continue what-ifs. Once it's fixed, upgrade it, and then we can rerun it again once we get some pressures. But to keep monitoring what's going on, so it's kind of a living, breathing model for you to understand what happens.
And I can't stress enough the fire flow issues. For example, fire flows in the village center currently, as modeled, were several hundred gallons per minute. Once these improvements are made, the fire flows will be somewhere over 1,500 gallons per minute, which is much more in line with requirements for fighting a fire. So right now, the village is deficient with respect to the fire flows in the village center. Okay, where are we now? We've completed our analysis, including, as Mark said, several what-ifs. And we basically confirmed the Phase 1 project as presented tonight. Our design is complete. And the New York State Office of Historic Preservation, shortening it, they've approved the project. You know, obviously, a project in a historic village needs to be reviewed by the state with respect to potential impacts to historic properties and things like that. And they've signed off on it. Health Department approval is pending. We plan on resubmitting back to the Health Department tomorrow, actually, which received their initial comments. And we expect the turnaround time to be fairly quick with that. The engineers said that the resubmit will be looked at a lot quicker than in our initial submission, which has taken some time. DOT has issued their technical approval for the project. And those are really the two technical approvals that we pursue, DOT and Department of Health. Last month, we submitted the New York State Water Improvement Act grant application, as well as the New York State Drinking Water State Revolving Fund application, which is for low-interest loan. Village is contemplating the bond resolution tonight. And so where do we go from here? You know, we're still not sure what it'll take. We should be hearing some feedback from the state with respect to the grant approval and the loan approval as well. Right now, they're going through a process where they grade each project that came in as an application. There's certain, there's a finite amount of funds available. I think it's 112 million for this round, for the grant anyways. So they'll go through and see what projects they received applications for. They'll rate them, grade them. And it's based on a lot of different things, including is your project ready to go? Which ours is, which is very important. You know, financial need, things like that. So this is the project schedule. The first line represents our analysis and design, which is a little deceiving because that's actually a year scrunched into that first segment there. You can see DOH and DOT permitting is ongoing, and we're looking to wrap it up probably within a month, or next month, I should say. Funding applications have been submitted, and we should start hearing some word back from them in the coming weeks. At this point, we've, I think, decided this would be best suited as a 2018 construction project. So we anticipate going out to bid January through the winter and award so that we're ready to start first thing in the spring. All right, so right now, we show the construction start April 15th. We have these white lines blocked off there for a very important line item fair week. So we're very cognizant that we're going to include within the project documents that the contractor is going to have certain restrictions during fair week in plus or minus so that we don't have any impact as far as traffic, things like that. So we show, right now, we show construction going through, basically the end of next year, project closeout, maybe extending into the beginning of 2019. Okay, here's kind of a real summary of some of the fees and costs and funding that we're going for. Construction cost is estimated at $2.8 million with a 10% contingency of $282,000. Engineering analysis, design, construction certification, inspection, right now is estimated at about $340,000. Legal counsel, administration, $210,000. So the total project cost is about $3.6 million. The village, it's our understanding, has committed $250,000 in capital towards the project. The maximum water improvement grant that we could obtain is 60% of our project costs, our eligible costs. So at this point, it's estimated at about $2.2 million. And with the grant, and probably more importantly, the last item, the loan through the state, there's certain fees related to that. That's right now estimated at about $100,000. So the last item is basically, if all goes well with the grant and all the estimated numbers here, will be about $1.3 million that the village will have to finance. So that's about all I have to say. We wanted to keep it brief tonight. You know, we're here for any questions, or we'll just throw it back to Grant or the mayor.
Frank, you want to take over in terms of talking about where we're going with the financing?
Yeah, Howie, you had a question too?
Yeah, I just wanted to, the price last year was around $2 million and some change. It's gone up to $3 million.
Yeah, some of that is related to the funding that we're going for, that the grant and the state funding have certain fees, administration costs that increase it. But more importantly, you know, as the design progressed, you know, things were identified. For instance, New York State DOT identified that any crossings of Route 9, because it has concrete pavement underneath the asphalt, are going to have to be repaired with concrete, probably dowelled into the adjacent concrete. So that's, you know, a labor-intensive kind of effort that is, you know, goes beyond kind of standard water main installation and repair.
What they did is they took us out of the straight, the rough trench business, and they're making us replace with concrete in some instances where we had a lot of crossings along with a pipe. They're making us do the entire roadway work.
Do you remember when we were going to that DOT approval?
Yeah, but we left the sidewalk area there. We're not talking about the sidewalk area. We can't do it there? Why not?
Construction feasibility was probably the biggest.
So we're going to a more intensive construction area?
With respect to, we looked at both instances. In fact, DOT would have preferred us to go underneath the sidewalk. However, just looking at the spatial dimensions, in some instances, you have, for instance, you have 10 feet from the face of a building that's very, very old, and a street tree, a utility pole, a low-hanging utility line, you know, things like that. So we reviewed that with DOT and basically discussed that even with trenchless construction and trying to basically bore the new water main underneath the sidewalk area, it wasn't feasible. And we also believe that the maintenance and protection of traffic would be very similar, whether you go up a lane of the street or if you go up the sidewalk, because you still have construction trucks that need to park adjacent to the sidewalk to receive material, to unload material. So you're basically still using a lane. So for all these reasons, you know, we all decided it was best to go within the street.
There's also another very important reason, and we discussed this last year. Howie was going down the sidewalk area in the proximity to these historic buildings. There was an issue with the foundations and actually damaging foundations as we were using that space. That forced us out of the street to limit that risk to businesses and homes that are in that area.
So now we're going to be going down the middle of the street, right? As opposed to the side of the street where the storm drains are?
We're going down, not down the middle, but we're going down essentially the middle of the southbound lane, for the most part. Because if we go down the middle of the street, you have to repave the whole entire width of Route 9, which would look nice, but we're trying to limit cost to the village.
How far can we go from the storm drains?
We, right now, are eight feet away from the storm drains that run along the west curve as you go up north, which is two feet less than the Health Department typically requires. It requires 10-foot separation of a water main from storm drainage and from sanitary sewer. They asked us to provide mitigation, so we provided a detail for that, which includes, it's called a flowable fill, that we would put over the water main. It's, I mean, it's a difficult situation, and it really came down to risk and to really feasibility of doing that type of structure. We actually looked at both sides as well. We looked at east and west sidewalk areas. And basically, you know, both situations were encumbered by the same obstacles.
It's just that two years ago, we were saying we're going to the sidewalk because that's the easiest thing to do. If you're saying state DOT, so that's not feasible.
That was just last year when DOT was making that with the proposal to use the sidewalk.
When Heinz first started this, he talked to you guys about, what's that underground trenching? New technology, it's going to save a lot of money.
Yeah, right, and we did look at that. Yeah, we did look at that. And, you know, before you have all the survey and utilities that you have to miss and all the street trees and things like that, what you...
Well, we're not, I shouldn't say this, but the street trees are underway out. So I hope that this project is not being affected by the street trees that are there.
No, the trees are just a part of the list of obstacles.
So you want, for trenchless technology, once you start having to, I'll call it hot hole or make the service connection, you're actually almost excavating every 10 or 15 feet, especially in the tight areas. And so it really takes away the effectiveness, especially in that section, of directionally drilling, when you have to dig up every service anyway to make that connection or along that pipeline. So that was the other reason.
There are areas, though, where we can use directional drilling, right? And where those areas are, you would apply that technique, correct?
Well, how are we going to set up the project manual for contractors? It's going to be their option. So whatever is the most cost-effective measure. The contractor could say it costs us more to directionally drill a water main under Route 9 or Chestnut or wherever, but we have less in the way of restoration of sidewalks and pavement, stuff like that. So we're going to leave it as, certainly as an option to the contractor. Neither technique, you know, standard trench water main construction or the trenchless is going to be excluded. You know, so it will come down to, you know, some contractors are better set up for that. And they might, again, weigh the options and say, you know, you can save just a little bit more if we directionally drill from Chestnut to Platt on Route 9, but the rest will detrench it so that, you know, it could be a mix and match.
Troy, one of the things that you didn't discuss is, what is the impact to our customers while this process is going on? And what do they have to do for our customers that are along Route 9 and the adjoining side streets?
Again, we're going to have in the project documents, and this came up as a comment from the Health Department, we're going to ask for the contractor to provide basically a schedule and a procedure for the construction. And we're going to have measures in the contract documents to limit any outages, temporary outages. You know, typically, the contractor will install, you know, a good section of water main and test it. And then we start to make the connections. And this, in this case, we're kind of in good shape because the old water main is going to be connected basically until the end, until we're ready to switch over to the new main, once that's installed, tested, and all that. So we don't expect significant outages in duration to customers. It's basically going to be the minimum required to switch over the service.
But at some point during the project, they will need to make that switch over.
Yes.
To the new main.
Yes, yep.
It's going to depend on what their service line looks like, too. If they have copper, a good copper service line, then, you know, that's going to be a good service line continuing. But if they have an old galvanized one, it can't really be connected well, then that's going to be an issue we're going to have to work on, the service lines.
I just want to bring that issue up because the public, you know, needs to know that there is, even though we're going to minimize as much impact as we can in terms of disruption, they do have to make a service connection. And there may be an impact in terms of the quality of their existing line.
That's right.
I guess traffic-wise, can you, are you going to be, say, digging up Route 9 and leaving the side streets alone, then you can go dig up the side streets, or all these can be open at the same time?
We would expect that the contractor would focus one operation and handle one area at a time.
And then they can close it off? It doesn't sound like they have to leave one section open while they're working on another for testing or anything like that.
There'll be some of that, sure, sure, there will be. It'll be a difficult time, but in the long run, it's going to be great for the village. And, you know, we're going to try to include provisions to minimize any of the headaches related to new construction, really reconstruction.
Troy, could you briefly summarize how this became the, I would say, the number-one area that we need to focus on again?
Sure.
The village, the distribution system, because we have a lot of, you know, connections and underground pipe. And we were just exposed to one just this week, right in front of Village Hall, with an inch-and-a-half line that is corroded and needed to be repaired. So what made this area more important than other areas?
Again, I think I touched on it a bit earlier. Not only is it going to improve water quality, pressure, capacity for businesses and users right adjacent to these streets, but from an overall village standpoint, including, and this was big in our application to the state for the grant, it also includes some regional users. You know, you have Duchess County Fairgrounds, which is a great asset to the village, as well as Northern Duchess Hospital. And the redundancy, resiliency, improving this line here to a 12-inch water main from a 6-inch cast iron that's tuberculated, as we saw in the pictures, provides really village-wide benefit.
From an analysis standpoint, we did, not only did we have sections, but we took pressures at all the hydrants, or the ones that we could get pressures at. We had pressures at other locations that we were able to get. We modeled all of this, compared it to the computer, and we did the works, as I mentioned before. And really what came out of it is this was the worst section physically pressured. All the factors added up that this was the weakest link that needed to be started and go first.
And again, in that concept report from 2014 from the, from Urban and Anthony, this is the phase that they... is the phase that they thought was in the most need of replacement possible, and they confirmed that.
Could you just tell us where that 12-inch cement line is? You said, you said there's a 12-inch line?
Proposed 12-inch.
It's proposed?
Yeah.
Six, right now?
I thought we're going from six to eight.
We're going from four to eight on the side streets, Livingston, Chestnut, and Platte. We're going from six inches to 12 inches along Route 9.
Oh, the main, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause we ran it, I think we ran it eight, 10, and 12, and it was, you know, a pretty significant improvement, going from 10 to 12, and the cost of the material itself really isn't a driving factor, so we thought the 12 would be prudent here.
Oh, one more question. I thought I heard this a few years ago, that the new pipes prevent tuberculation. Is that true?
Well, these are gonna be, these are gonna be, well, it used to be spent line pipes, so hopefully that'll be minimized. If you have, obviously, something that each way at the cement line, which hopefully we won't have any hydrogen sulfide or anything like that, hopefully we should be better off with the cement line pipes. These were just regular cast iron pipes. Or, have you had, we've got a...
We have one over there.
Well, that's what I was just gonna bring up. There's a good example of this right over here on the table.
Right.
If anybody has not seen, this is what came out of, right here on Center Street. But it's a good example of what's throughout a distribution system, with the corrosion inside the pipe. If anybody in the audience would like to look at the pipe, please go for it.
Pass it around.
Please pick it up by the towel.
All right, that's it. That's it from me.
So, the very next step, which would apply, as Troy mentioned, we'd apply for grants, but the very next step is to talk, that one of the requirements for the grant is to also go for a bond. And we need to talk about that bond, which I think Grant is prepared, Grant and Karen, thank you, are prepared to talk about what we need to do for the bond.
So, yeah, so Karen and I also looked at the numbers where we're at, and we set aside now $170,000 for capital allocation, $100,000 to dredge the lagoon out, and $70,000 for the distribution system. So this is a distribution project. Roughly, if we borrowed $1 million at 2%, it's about 61 grand a year, but that's just total back-end involved calculations. So, when we do the lagoon, which will be in the next couple of years, we will have that space in the budget, that $100,000, it could also go toward this bond debt. We obviously have the $70,000, and what Karen was pointing out is that we have a 20-year bond that started in 1998 for the plant filter upgrade, and that's gonna expire in 19, in the...
This year.
2018, oh, this year?
Yes.
So that $50,000 annually will be also available for bond debt. So I feel even within the rate structure, and you can add to this, but even within the rate structure that we have, which is basically about what Karen, $6 per thousand gallons, which is really low, maybe unrealistically low, because we have, obviously, have infrastructure problems with our water distribution system, that even within our current rate structure, that we can fund a couple million dollars in debt. We're in for the grant money, we're hopefully gonna get that, you know, a million and a half or whatever. It's all fluid at this point. But the sort of irony is that the EFC, in order to apply for the grant money, in order to apply for the low-interest financing, we need to do the bond resolution and get the bond resolution done. The bond resolution is an outside number. We can authorize the bonding for the full amount, which is recommended, but the bonds will be, it'll be replaced or reduced by any state or federal grants that are awarded. So we're not gonna jump into the worst-case scenario, which is the $3.6 million, thereabouts, and go and fund this, but we do need a bond resolution. It's suggested for the full amount. We've already agreed at a previous meeting that I attended, that we're gonna put $250,000 down, so that also, that already reduces the principal amount. They're in for the grant funding, they're in for the low-interest funding, but we're not gonna jump into this unless we're comfortable with the debt structure. So, did you wanna add anything about?
No, I think you hit all the points. We have a $50,000 a year payment on the current debt that will be expiring this year. The 170 that we allocate toward the capital projects will be, go towards the principal and interest payments. And the maximum amount, it was recommended to authorize the bond, an amount of $3,735,000, and it does not, it does not mean that we have to borrow that much, it does not mean that we even have to do the project. Once we, once the board authorizes a bond issue, it's good for 10 years. I didn't know that, but I found that out from our, from our bond council, but, so, it's the first step in, in the board committing to the project, but it does not mean that we have to borrow that much. But what would happen if we did not, if we did not do a bond resolution for enough, is that we would have to go through another bond resolution and go back to doing a whole resolution and doing a meeting and borrowing more, so.
And you have experience with this, right? Coming up short and having to do it again?
And have to go back, go back out. Right, it's having to go back out, so it's better to have a bond authorized for the maximum amount, and then start putting, like Brad was saying, start putting the 250 and start that the village is committing to it, and start putting the funding in place, and then seeing, and then reducing that to what you really need to bond.
So is this bonding being done under the low-interest financing?
That's one of the programs is low-interest financing. And what, the EFC can act as a bank, and you get their AAA rate, which is lower than what we get on the open market. I think that's a triple A.
And it's all the, I think it's, once we do the bond resolution, it's all in the options of, I mean, that's the best option, I mean, getting the lowest rate and going out 20, 30 years.
If we got a super-low rate, we might go out 30 years instead of 20, because it's, you know, lower than, a rate lower than inflation is free.
So if there is a potential, we could amortize this over...
30?
30 years if we would like, which would...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I don't think you can exceed 30, but we wouldn't wanna, probably wanna do that anyway, but 20 might be more realistic, or...
I think it would depend on the payment, right?
Yeah.
At the end, at the end of the day, and even for those payment, we do have options, correct?
Correct.
I mean, one is, we're retiring debt, which can help offset, we have money there to also help offset, and we have our water supply customers as well.
Correct. We're trying to minimize the rate impact.
And just for clarification, well, two things. How long would, how long would you expect these new pipes to last? Is this a 100-year project or a 50?
The rule of thumb for any bank is, they give you your amortization period of what they feel.
Right.
So 30 years generally is what they feel is a useful life. We're up to 50 and 60 years in a lot of municipalities that we work in. I don't think anybody, unless we just find out that there's problems, that we would go in earlier, then there are problems, okay? But 30 years is what, I don't wanna soft-pad something that, if the bank says it's worth zero after 30 years, that's, that's what they believe, that's what they call the life expectancy. I look at it differently from a practical standpoint. We always are 10, 15 years old.
Well, Mark, that brought up an interesting thought. By making this improvement, which would improve pressure and capacity in this area, and we have the other infrastructure within our distribution system, could that potentially cause a problem elsewhere because of now increased pressure within the overall system?
I don't think we're increasing pressure in the overall system.
Well, you said it's pressure improvements.
What's happening is, we're getting better pressure in the weakest area. So, your pressure is really supposed to be at a constant rate?
Correct.
So, I don't, if you're asking, are we pushing the problem downhill somewhere, uphill somewhere? I suppose it's possible, but again, that's, we did some of the what-if analyses, I think, to say, all right, if we change this and improve this, where do we go next, or what's gonna be the next? Hopefully, we have that defined well enough that we can watch that carefully in the next few years.
Yeah, the improvement is more so in the flow of the album, you know? The pressure, as Mark said, especially with the village, with, you know, being pretty flat, you know, it's a pretty constant. Is there any increases in pressure? Isn't a matter of, you know, someone on beach currently has 30 PSI pressure and it's gonna go up to 90, it's something like that, or, you know, a couple PSI, something like that, so it wouldn't be a dramatic increase in pressure that we worry about popping out the water mains on other streets.
And just for clarification, the costs of the project are fully borne by the users of the water system? This does not go out into the general fund? This is not borne by them?
That's right.
That's the, how we would fund it, is through that user fix.
So if you're not, if you're not on the water system, then you're not paying for it?
Correct.
Just so, everybody in the village is on the system?
Well, we have, we have what, approximately 1,800 customers, and I think it's 1,760 is what I added up, but I think it's, you know, say, the round numbers of 1,800 customers, which includes village and portions of the town that are, that pay for their water. And so that's the base.
And as I understand it, there is only one rate structure?
Yes, correct.
Whether you're in the village or outside the village?
The same rate structure.
Well, it's a business rate structure.
Six, no, it's the same.
It's $6.
It's $6 a thousand.
It's just different thresholds, but the amount per thousand is...
I thought we had a rate for the gardens, like if you're out of area?
That's where it's at.
Oh.
And it's based on the size of the line, so if you, you know, I mean, there's a threshold, there's a minimum, there's a minimum amount based on the size of the line that supplies the water.
Is it correct to say to the public that if the board does not approve the bond resolution, we would not have any opportunity to pursue grants? Is that accurate?
Correct, it's a requirement for the grant application.
They wanna see a commitment from the village that they backed the project in.
Actually, they wanted several commitments all along the way.
They're right.
The first commitment was, you gotta be shovel-ready, which we drove that, and we're, and I hate to use the term shovel-ready, but that just means that we're ready to go, because we have designs, so that engineering is done, and we're ready to go to construction, right? So that, that was, and then you have all the approvals you have to go through, which is, you know, DOT, DOH, you know, and New York State to get those commitments, and then at the last meeting, we also made a commitment of the $250,000, which also showed our intent, our willingness to drive this project through. So, this is just another one that I think increases our opportunity to be able to make this a success.
How much is the current interest rate on the bonds?
Well, it really depends on how far, how you're gonna go. 2.6 is what we've got to fire trouble on.
That's on the 20, 20 years.
So, I figured how we, 1%, if we get 1% relief on our rate for two, if we funded two and a half million, that can save a few hundred grand over 20 years in interest payment. So, I think it's worth if we go for the lower rate.
Why don't you pay for it yourself, right? Why would you pay for it at a higher rate?
You could. That's an option.
That's a bad idea.
Again, it's, the EFC is, they have AAA bond rating, and we presumably don't, so our rate's higher than theirs. So we do, the next step would be for me to ask you folks to join me in passing the bond resolution, and then there's a seeker bond resolution. I don't know why we have to approve seeker again, but we can't, we need to. Should I just read the first couple paragraphs of the bond resolution? I can't read those.
For legal, we are allowed to, you know, read the heading and then summarize...
Yeah.
The bond resolution.
So the bond resolution says, "A bond resolution authorizing subject to permissive referendum, the replacement and reconstruction of water mains along various roads and and for the village of Rhinebeck, Dutchess County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $3.735 million, and authorizing the issuance of $3.735 million serial bonds to said village to pay the cost thereof." And then it says, "Section 1, the replacement and reconstruction of water mains along various roads and and for the village of Rhinebeck." We just described the project. The amount is $3.37, $3.735 million. The probable usefulness of the life of the project is 34 years, it says somewhere. That we're pledging the full faith and credit of our budget to pay the principal and interest, and that's, you know, what they're looking at. And that, under local finance, we're following local finance law, and that Karen has the ability to administrate these bonds, the village treasurer, and that's pretty much a summation, without going into, it's only several pages long, but pretty detailed. So I would like to make a motion that we pass the bond resolution.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Any other discussion? So, Carrie, thank you.
Thank you, and then, yeah, and then before the, well, we do need to pass a seeker resolution, which basically says it's a type 2 action, which is, it's a type 2 action, meaning it doesn't have a big impact on the environment, because we're replacing and reconstructing water mains along various roads, including original furnishings, equipment, machinery, apparatus, uppertunities, as well as incidental improvements and expenses in connection therewith. So because it's, you're replacing plumbing that already exists, then it has a lower impact, and that's a statutory allowance for type 2 action, which is a low-impact action. So I'd like to make a resolution that we pass a seeker for the bond resolution as well.
Second.
Go ahead, you can do it.
Rick was telling me.
Round of sequins. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Discussion? Carrie, thank you.
So we're not real strong on procedure, but we know what we're talking about.
Thanks a lot, guys.
All right, the next item on the agenda is adhering to the amendment to the ethical code requirements, which was brought up at our last board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
So the purpose of this, there was text in the, a previous ethics that came under discussion as we formed the Ethics Committee, and so now I'm gonna turn it over to Rick and Howie to address this issue.
Okay, so, basically, the original text in our village code said that, "No ethics board member shall be an officer in a political party, no ethics board member shall be employed or act as a lobbyist in the village, and ethics board member, excuse me, an ethics board member may make campaign contributions, but may not participate in any campaigning, excuse me, any election campaign, except as a candidate." And it was pointed out to us that this is a seemingly overly restrictive clause. And so we had a discussion, Howie and I, and the people who are interested in being on the Ethics Committee, had a discussion about changing it, and then I believe Howie and Brett had an additional discussion about the history of the, of the paragraph.
Yes, Brett was the, was the original architect of this ethics code.
Brent was the, was the original architect of this ethics code. So, he and I talked the other day, because the incoming members wanted, wanted me to talk to Brent, so we kind of decided to strike.
Because it's, it's a nice idea, but it is very strict.
Yeah.
It's getting to the point where it might, it's interfering with people being able to, you know, become members of the Ethics Board. Because the type of people who are involved in campaign might also be the type of people that are interested in public service, and...
Right, and it doesn't affect any parties, it's, it's equal to both parties, so it's not, it's not having a favor in one part or another. So, what did we, what was the?
Well, we had one change, but we may have decided to, um...
But?
We made a proposal to say an ethics board member may make campaign contributions, but may not participate in any village or town election, excuse me, campaign, except as a candidate. And basically, what we're doing is striking all the restrictions, so...
So, you just strike that whole sentence?
Construe that whole sentence.
We wanted to keep an ethics board member may make campaign contributions. Do we wanna keep that?
I think if you strike it, it's still pretty clear that...
Yeah, what's, what?
You can.
Yeah, it's just, so now, basically, it's saying?
Yeah, I think what we need to do, though, if I can interrupt here for a second, because what we got is, we really gotta open the public hearing to have this discussion. So, we guess, I kind of jumped the gun, so I apologize for that. So, what we really need to do is open the hearing, open the public hearing, and at the same time, we can open for public comment and, and for that discussion. So, I think before we go into the discussion, we did receive correspondence about this, that we could read into it, but if there's anybody also in the audience that would like to comment, please feel free to provide any com, any comments. Do we have anybody that signed in? I don't think so, that's prepared, so there's no con, no comments from the audience, but we did receive correspondence, which we got.
We need the motion to open the hearing in a second.
Oh, you're right, sorry. So, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carrie, we also need to open the public comment section.
Correct.
Which we did. So, I make a motion to open a public comment section.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Back to, let me read back up. So, is there any public comment? Having no public comment, I make a motion to?
Do you wanna read this little one, 'cause that's, that is a public comment.
You're right, it is a public comment. So?
Do you wanna summarize, I read to read the whole thing, or you just summarize? Will, will, will this be included in the minutes, or is it?
No, that has to be read.
Has to be read.
It's just like a shoe standing out in front of you.
Right. You don't need to do it?
I'll do it, okay. This letter was received, it's a couple days. It's from Carol Urban of Twenty-Five Pond Drive, West. I, Carol J. Urban, resident of the village of Rhinebeck, hereby submit for the record the following statement in connection with the public hearings given for Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, concerning an amendment to the Ethics Committee requirements. At present, the text of section six dash eighteen of the Village Code of Ethics reads, and then, read that, I'm not gonna read it again, we've talked about the change, which he says, "I strongly oppose both the original language and the proposed, proposed new text as unnecessarily infringement on the rights of citizens who seek to serve the community in a nonpartisan position. Clearly, in my view, the right of a citizen to participate in elections, no matter at which level of government, ought not to be prescribed or limited by reason of that citizen's service to the community. The quote, 'model code of ethics for local government,' quotes quote, published by the New York State Attorney General's Office, contains no such prescription or limitation to the rights of members of local ethics boards to participate in government elections. The state model code is silent on this subject. In Rhinebeck, the Ethics Code as written applies to all village employees and/or appointees and volunteers. However, of this number, only members of the Ethics Board have the right to participate in elections prescribed or limited. For example, such a prescription or limitation does not apply to the zoning board of appeals or planning board members. Such distinction applies, excuse me, such a distinction applied only to ethics board members is clearly unfair and appears to be based upon the presumption that participation in elections is an indicator of potentially improper behavior that would bring politically partisan judgments to issues before the board. Such an assumption is false and insupportable. Clearly and most simply, there is no inherent conflict between fulfilling the duties and responsibilities of an ethics board member and participating in the democratic election process. Therefore, I strongly object to both the current language of the Village Code of Ethics and to the proposed amendment to the text being considered. I believe that the proposed change ought to be discarded and the original language revised to permit ethics board members to serve and to enjoy the full rights of citizenship within their community. Thank you, Carol Urban.
So, that's the public comment section. Right, so now I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment section.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, now we can go into discussion in terms of the hearing and have that discussion of what we wanna do about the recommendation that was brought forward in the last meeting in terms of, to the public hearing, in the public comments. So, it's kind of a repeat of, sorry.
What were you saying, yes?
Well, I think, I think one of the items when Howie and I were meeting with the board members was, is that the code is much more of a balls-and-strikes, much more of an umpire code. There aren't a lot of, the, the code is pretty clear, lays out a fair amount of bright lines. And either, some of the comments go, so you've committed a violation, or you haven't. So, that in terms of the ethics board members' conduct, it's pretty clear what they are, aren't doing. The other condition is that the Ethics Board also makes recommendations to the village board, which we then have a chance to act upon. So, should there be some, I'm gonna say this myself, should there be some creeping sense of partisanship that should infect this board? There is yet another check on that, because anything they do has to rise up to us, and we would have to approve it. So, that in and of itself gives another, another break in another hearing, or another firewall to prevent a partisanship or biases from coming, bias from coming in.
So, when Brent and I met the other day, we looked this over, and we kind of recommend that we strike out the part that says, if you're looking at, you have a copy of it there. The last sentence, an ethics board member may make campaign contributions, period. And then strike the rest of the sentence out. Is that true with what we?
Or just strike the whole sentence?
I think you can strike the whole sentence. I mean, because basically, you can't, you can't be a lobbyist, you can't be employed.
You can't be an officer in a political party, which is, you know, I could see that. But just working on a campaign, that isn't gonna make you, you're, make you biased in, you know, an ethical evaluation, you know, that's... People just don't really behave that way.
And, and I think, I mean, I think the point is taken. We want people to participate at levels if they're at, in their local government and to participate in campaigns, politics, and civic service is important.
It's a very strict code, I understand. And now, when it gets road tested, you see the kind of things maybe you don't need, and I don't think we need it.
I'd like to just bring out, not only the last sentence, but why don't we just be silent about the whole thing? And not, you know, no ethics board ever shall be an officer in a political party, no ethics board member shall be employed as a lobbyist in the village. I mean, I don't know what the definition of, in this case, what a definition of a lobbyist would be. Right, and that means they can't go out and campaign for somebody? Is that what we're saying?
Good question.
And what does lobbyist mean?
Right. So, I don't know, I, my, my personal thoughts on this is that this whole section of the code is, is restrictive, and that it really doesn't hinder us, and if we want to allow citizens to participate in the democratic process, we should really strike that section of code and not make amendment, and just strike the code, strike that portion.
Would you stick with an employee of the village? Is it okay to have an ethics member be an employee?
Yeah, I don't, I think that's a pretty good, good rule.
I think it's want somebody from outside.
Yeah. Is that in there?
It said, no ethics board shall be employed or act, shall be employed or act as a lobbyist. Now, definition, again, is it employed by who? Right, is it employed by some lobbyist? Or is it employed by the village?
Shall be employed by the village.
What was the intent?
Employed by the village, that's the intent.
Is that the intent of the code, to be employed by the village?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
Doesn't actually say that.
Well, we're changing.
No, well, it says, shall be employed, blah, 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 in the village. It doesn't mean?
Come?
Nope.
In slash by the village, yeah, it should have been. It's not a draft.
It says, shall be employed or act as a lobbyist in the village. But the, the language is a claim.
Right.
Rick is correct. Every committee works at the pleasure of the board, so there is that firewall. I'm of the view that the five of us has struggled with this language, and this is the first time that, that you fellows have reviewed it. I think, I think the letter writer makes a pretty compelling case as to whether that, this does seem restrictive to me.
Well, I think we should keep the first sentence. No ethics board member shall be an officer in a political party.
Okay, well, as an officer, what if they're a treasurer?
Well, that's officer, and I, I think, I think though, but I think that's okay, because you want the, the appearance of the board. And if you have, I think, as a village and as, as a government, I think that we can wanna have, even if, even if the nicest person in the world, the most ethical person in the world, is also the treasurer of a, of a party, I think that it's okay to ask them to step away from being a, a party member, just for the appearances of, of the civic. It, it really does, I think, make a, make a clear, a clear delineation. Because if you're an officer in a party, it means you have specific duties.
You could be a committee member in a party, but that's, you're not an officer.
Not an officer.
Right.
Just sort of distinction there, that they're allowed to participate, given their right as a citizen in that democratic process, and we're not restricting that from doing that.
Right.
And just because they're volunteering to be on, and nothing, and being appointed by our board to be on the Ethics Committee.
So, it's my understanding, Andrea, or Rich isn't here, but it's our understanding in a public hearing, we can act to make the law under, under consideration less restrictive, but not more restrictive.
Not more restrictive, correct.
So, it seems like we could strike this language within the context of this hearing, move to strike the language in the context, and then apply it. I guess, all right.
I think we should keep a C, though. We should keep a sub-paragraph C, because it's gonna throw everything else off.
Oh, okay.
So, let's keep something in C.
Well, no, it's so bad.
Let's keep something in C.
Paragraph C shall remain.
No, I mean, half kidding.
So, where are we? I mean?
I, I think, I think the?
It's six eighteen, C.
Are we striking all of this, striking portions of it, or just?
Um, maybe keeping the first sentence, I think.
Yeah, I think we should just strike the second sentence. I, I think that the lobbyist thing is rare, so maybe it's not gonna come up anyway. So, it doesn't hurt to have it in there.
I, I'm in the opinion that we should strike everything after then, the first sentence. No ethics board shall be an officer. I can go along with that, but anything beyond, shall not, unless?
I don't think we should be employed by the village.
Well, okay, if we're saying, we're gonna use the word, employed by the village.
Yes, I would, yeah, I would.
Because it's not clear in?
So, I have a, I have an edited version here. I mean, read, should I read the, how, what's the procedure for doing that?
It's a discussion.
I'm sorry.
How, if we wanna propose an amended version of this, what's the proper way to do it?
You can do it right now.
Okay, so, I would like to?
Because it's being less restrictive instead of more restrictive.
Okay, so, I'd like to amend the text to the following section, C. No ethics board member shall be an officer in a political party, period. No ethics board member shall be employed by the village, period. That would be the entire text.
I like that a lot, my second.
Yeah? Yes.
That's what I like, yes.
What's that?
May I re-read it back to you? It's supposed to be just no ethics board shall be an officer in a political party, and no ethics board member shall be employed by the village, period.
I have, if you want, I have my.
No, just.
Okay, got it, okay. That's good.
Is that a motion?
Well, where are we, where are we procedurally?
If we make a motion that we pass the law with the revision as read just now, there.
Okay, do I have to close the hearing?
My second.
We did close it.
Well, we didn't close the public hearing.
You're right, you're right. Close the discussion.
So, what we really need to do is close the public hearing, and there's no other comment on terms of the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Any other discussion? Okay. Public hearing is closed in regard to the amendment to the Ethics Code. Now, we can go into the next procedural part, which says if we wanna make a motion to make the code change.
Okay, maybe Rick should make that motion, 'cause he can read it again.
Okay, I make a motion to change our Code of Ethics. It's section six eighteen, sub-paragraph C. The wording would be as follows. No ethics board member shall be an officer in a political party, period. No ethics board member shall be employed by the village, period.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is for the awarding of Montgomery Aster paving bids.
Okay, so, I have some good news generally all around, and basically, over the course of the spring and the summer, we've been looking to work with, have the village and the town highway departments work together. The town highway department has the equipment to do paving. And our question was, would it be cheaper to have the town do paving rather than contracting out of the full job? So, there are a fair amount of moving parts to this. One of the things that the town can't do is milling and removal of the old road surface. So, we, John Pennon, as superintendent of public works, put out a bid for the entire job, to see what a private contractor would do for a private job. We also, we also had discussions with Barashura, the highway superintendent within the town. And then, when we figured out that the, that we're gonna have to contract out for the milling and the removal of the old surface, John reached out to three contractors to find out who could do the milling and the removal on our schedule. So, here's the short answer. To have the full, have the job done fully by private contractors would cost anywhere from about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to almost a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. If we work with the town, including the cost of the milling and the removal of the old pavement, our total would be about eighty thousand dollars. So, we're looking at at least a fifty thousand dollar savings over one of the better, over one of the better bids. I would like to add that this is to mill Aster in Montgomery and repave them. There's also an extension of Mill Street at the south end of town. That is, Mill Run, I'm sorry, Mill Run, that is not being milled, but is being repaved. And since the town is doing, doing that section. There are some costs in here that are just to the village, we have to. We have to replace some of the public utilities, have the risers that connect the water mains and the sewers all line up. And our highway department will be doing some of the prep work before the main event so that, so those are some costs that we will have. They don't appear in that $80,000 number. But we would have had those same costs regardless whether any contractor or we were doing it.
I thought since I interrupted you, I thought with the milling, we didn't have to replace the risers.
I think the idea is that you got to see where it all comes down.
Okay.
You know, it, that's...
All right.
Yeah. So I guess, and I wanted a question, I have a question about structure of the motion for this. Or do you guys have any questions? I should say. I'm here. The town can't do the milling? Are they subcontracting that out then? Well, we are contracting for the milling of our sections of the road. I think in the future now, this has been a lot of, there's a lot of working out of things to do with this cooperating between the town and the village. And I think in the future, if we're going to do a project with them, we would sort of look at something like having, you know, can we go ahead and one bid for the milling and break it down? And there would be slightly different ways I would go about this. This was sort of a, I want to call it a proving test, but it was a way for us to find out what it would cost, what we need to do, and the procedures that we need to take. In addition to approving the funds to be spent, Gary will be signing an agreement, an intermissible agreement with the town for the paving project of Aster, Mill, and Montgomery. I'm not sorry.
Yeah, for your...
Yeah, pretty straightforward, I can admit. So overall, I think I'm very pleased that we have approximately $150,000 in highway funds that have come from the state that have been set aside. And it was anticipated at the beginning of this year that we were going to spend it all on Aster and Montgomery. And it turns out that that means that going into next year, we will have a substantial reserve. And so we can be a little bit more ambitious about the roads that we want to pave because there is a fair amount of work that needs to be done. So with that...
Before you go, I would just like that comment because I think, as you mentioned, it's important to say that this is a joint project. It's not just the town doing the work. We are also supplying labor and our trucks for hauling and working together and doing this. So it's not like one of all. We're participating in this endeavor.
It's really a collaboration.
It's a collaboration throughout the whole thing.
And saving money.
And, yeah. We save money. So all these bids are factoring in the combined labor cost and the truck costs for us to be able to do it as well.
So, yeah. So should I make a motion, I guess, as would the bond, to make a motion to authorize a sort of a spending cap towards this? Or do you make...
Well, you can make a motion to accept the bid is what you really need to do. And what we don't, we need to make, if we're going to move forward, we need to make a motion to accept the bid first. A bid.
A bid, okay. Do a little math here for a second.
So is there a bid for the milling, right?
Yeah, it's the, well, it's the bid, it's the, it's the bid for Mill and then the hauling. Is, so this would be for $14,250, but can we authorize a little bit more? This is not, this includes...
This is, yes. This is the total.
That's the total, but that's not the bid.
Right.
Right, the bid is just from Callaroosso Brothers. That's the agreement. We, I, we don't have...
For the milling.
For the milling.
Yes.
For the milling and the hauling. And that's the only bid that needs to be accepted.
No, I think we need to award the paving project as well. Is what we need to do.
Okay, well, we just awarded it total.
I...
Ah, okay, okay, fine. Then I will do that.
The one thing, here's what we're going to be awarding. It's a one total because...
Ah, okay, I didn't understand. I didn't understand, we got it, okay, that's it. Should we leave a little room in the, it's the official number here with 7968684? Should we put a contingency to make it $85,000?
I think that's always wise because you don't know what's going to happen.
Right. Get some, a broken paper or something along the way. Are we, we're going to be accepting the winning bid? Well, there's not, the problem is that we're actually, we are funding the entire project. Effectively, we have...
We're funding our portion.
Our portion of the entire project, right. Right.
Is what we're out, what we're, what we're needing a bid on to move this forward.
This is a piggyback kind of situation.
Right.
We're not doing the formal public bid because we can use municipalities.
Right. So...
But we did get estimates from other...
From a district.
Just to keep it on.
Just to make sure we're up to it. We have basically three estimates. And one of them is including the town.
Right.
Right. Right. So I guess I'm still a little lost how to...
So you need to make a motion to award the bidding of Aster, Montgomery, and Mill, you know, for the total sum of 71...
And in the minutes, we should also have what the bids were from the other, from the other companies so that it's documented that the town was the low bidder.
Right.
Okay.
I have one, you want?
Well, he's got one. I've got one too. Okay.
So it is a low bid compared to the other two.
Okay. I move that we accept the low bid.
For price, right?
Low price, okay. Of using Callaroosso Brothers to do milling, hauling, and the village, excuse me, the town to do paving for, I'm going to say approximately $85,000, which gives us about a $5,000 cap, a $5,000 room in case something happens along the way.
As a low bid compared to...
As a low bid, okay. As a low bid compared to Callaroosso, who came in a bid at $134,700. Callahan came in, Callahan Industries came in at $194,022.50. Those are the other prospectus that we have.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Any discussion? So now you need to make a motion that we sign the IMF.
Okay, well, Gary signs the IMF.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Mayor Bassett to sign the intermissible agreement with the town, which will be signed by both...
Should we do it?
Sure. Which will be signed both by the town and the village? Do I read it out loud?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to skip the agreement, the part between that designates the town and the village. "That in full consideration payments and agreements hereafter mentioned, the town agrees to perform certain work and furnish certain materials for the village as follows. The town will furnish labor, machinery, and materials required to repave parts of Montgomery Street, Aster Drive, and Mill Road in the village of Rhinebeck. The village of Rhinebeck shall supply all supervision to repave said roads. The village of Rhinebeck shall reimburse the town for labor, machinery, and material used." And "The town shall further save the village from all claims for labor or materials used in the town's performance under this contract. The town shall further defend and indemnify the village against any and all claims for property damage and bodily injury, including death arising from allegations of negligence against the town in a performance under the terms of this agreement. But the town shall not be required to defend and indemnify the village against claims arising from allegations of negligent design or signing of the highways covered in this agreement or any other allegations or negligent acts of commission or omission attributed to the village." And then basically, that would be signed by both Mayor Bassett and Supervision here.
I move that we approve that as read.
My second. All in favor?
Okay. Can I ask one question? Did the legal counsel look at this?
Yes. Yes, yes, this is, we've found this from various councils. Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Any other discussion? Karen?
When do we start?
So we do have a date.
We do have a date. It looks like work is going to be beginning, let us say, in the first week of August.
For our section. They're actually starting the project July 14th, which is this week. They're going to start on the far ends of their roads in terms of Aster and Montgomery, I'm not sure which one they're starting on the 1st, but...
And they're making their way...
They're making their way towards us because what's important is we need to get the curbs and sidewalks done at the intersection of Aster and Montgomery, which is due to start soon. So that work has, is, you know, being carried out by STAT Construction, if you remember, STAT, who's doing the curbs and sidewalks at that intersection. And that'll be a conjunction so that we can intersect when they're done to be able to get everything done at one time.
There are a lot of little moving parts to coordinate.
A lot of times, yeah. Yeah. Along with, as Rick mentioned, getting the milling done, getting the risers, if we need them, where they're needed. And I think there's some catch basins also that need to be done on Mill Road that are right on the line or that are on our line or their line or whatever. But I think there's a catch basin that's on Village that needs to be raised up since that road's not being milled to be able for paving, which our highway department will be doing, that catch basin.
So the good news, I mean, this has been a, like I said, it's been a bit of a proving process this time through. I would change it a little bit. I think we could make it streamlined in the coming year. But I think that at the bottom line, it really is, it's been a real... It should be a real money saver.
Yeah, so. So Rick, thank you for pushing this through. Appreciate that effort. Thanks. Getting that done. Okay. Next, the peddler's permit application. And really what we're now going to do is we're just voting on the, to approve the application.
The resolution.
Right, well, we're really approving just the application that was submitted by the department.
Right. I meant to say by a resolution, right? This isn't a public hearing?
It's, no. It's just, we're accepting the application process. It's not a public hearing. So the public, I mean, we can go through this, but we really have been through it a lot and have published the wording. Unless, I don't have all the changes in front of me, which pieces were changed, but...
Really, it's the fees, the...
Do you have the summary, Pat?
No, but I have what the requirements, the requirements, it's the fingerprint investigation and it's the fees. Cross brand, basically.
Right, here, here it's good. This is the different type of instructor.
That's the law itself.
No, this is, these are not all the changes, right? These are...
That's the law.
That's the law.
That's the law.
The laws on this.
So we're approving the application for the peddler's permit is what we're really voting on to approve.
Do you want to look at it, Rick?
I've got it.
At our last, at our last meeting, we did make several changes in terms of removing some of the identification processes out there, which we voted on and approved. So now, this has been, quote, codified so that we can now vote on the application. If anybody has any questions about the application, we can answer it.
Mayor, do you have, just this question, probably a very minor point, but the application consistent with the code, any person, whether resident or not, will have to complete this, which of course makes great sense. But then we do ask for a telephone number in paragraph nine that says local. So can a complete this as non-resident? Does it suggest that then I need a local phone number?
It's based, I know on our event application, we have local and day of the event. And it's basically one that is, I think that's what it's in reference to. That was not something that was changed from the permit. That's something that has been in the permit.
Right. And I guess my interpretation was that while you're here local, right? You may not have a number, but we have to be able to reach you.
Locally.
Locally.
Yeah.
Okay. I was interpreting. I was thinking you literally interpreted it. Okay.
I have a different interpretation, but you may be correct, but I don't know.
Okay. That seems very good.
This really strengthens our peddler's permit, as I've talked before in the past. And Pat has also been working on the identification tactics that will be associated with each permit that will allow our police force to easily identify someone who is peddling on the street with identification because under today, we really don't know, I'm going to just repeat what I repeated last time. We don't know if they have an approved application if they're here, if they're out on the street, nor do we know if they have one truck, 10 trucks, no trucks, et cetera. So I'd really like to thank Pat for her effort in bringing this forward and making this a better process for us in the village and to protect the people who are here. So with that, I'd like, I'm going to make the motion that we accept the application that has been changed and modified for our peddler's permit.
Second.
Correct, and effective in the motion. Sorry.
Sorry. I'll make a motion that we accept the application as of today, 7/25/2017, for the peddling and solicitation permit application as so written and supplied by our village clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Discussion?
Oh, did we figure out the permit placard, whatever you're...
I have a couple of options. I'd like maybe one or two trustees talk to me and see what we can do, same kind of brainstorm on it.
I know you gave us some prices.
Yeah, I was also contacting local, I'm sorry, to see about just a heavy-duty card for it because these are going to be temporary, so why spend the money on a plastic one that's going to be only something that's...
Temporary.
Temporary.
Right.
So I'm working on those couple of things.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. The next item on the agenda is the police union memorandum of agreement. In our past meeting, we discussed the contract and we also had a signed memorandum of agreement that has been signed by their representation as well as us that we've reviewed. So now what we need to do is just formally accept the memorandum of agreement, which was the part that Pat included in here, which had those minor changes. There's, the next step of this process is to formally sign the contract. But to get to that next step, we have to accept the memorandum of agreement. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, on we accept the memorandum of agreement as hereby agreed by and between the village of Rhinebeck and the UPSEU Part-Time Police Officers Unit that the collective bargaining agreement between the parties that expired on May 31st, 2017, shall be extended for a period of four years and the contract shall commence that day until June 1st, 2017, and shall end on May 31st, 2021. All the terms of the predecessor agreement shall remain unchanged except as modified in the MOA. I can go through all that, but we have been through it in detail. But I'll summarize. Article 4, Section 6 was to revise and provide a five-year minimum service requirement for purposes of Section 75 for protection of new hires. So basically, unit members hired prior to June 1st, 2017 shall be entitled to the due process protections of New York State Civil Service after the completion of three years of continuous service. Unit members hired on or after June 1st, 2017 shall be entitled to the due process protection of New York State Civil Service law after the completion of five years. Article 7 was the wages. The initial hiring rate should be now be $20. And we included a six-month employment. Such ratio will be increased to $20.50. After one year of employment, the ratio will increase to $21. After 18 months, employment ratio should increase to $21. After 18 months, employment ratio should increase to $21.50. And there are individuals who are currently below these rates who will be brought up to those standards based on your data wire, which include Dan Killian, who was hired on August 16, 2016. Article seven, unit members who have completed two years of service of our village shall receive the following wage increases effective January, June 1st, 2017. Wages shall be increased by 2%, effective June 1st, 2018, 2%. Effective June 1st, 2019, 2%. And effective June 1st, 2020, 2%. There was a change to the wording in section B of overtime, revised to include court time from the calculation of the 20-hour threshold for eligibility to receive overtime pay. So all hours worked in excess of eight hours per day should be paid at the rate of one and a half times the employee's hourly pay, provided the employee has worked 20 hours during the week. And court time should not be considered as time worked for purposes of calculating what employee has meant to 20 hours. This allows for better scheduling. That's the purpose of that, is allow us to, people who are part-time, to be able to schedule that and not consume their court time. We also made a change to, excuse me, the revised list of holidays, which employees should be paid at time and one-half at the rates follows, which would be New Year's Day, Labor Day, President's Day, Homeless Day, Easter Day, Easter Sunday, Christmas Eve, Veterans Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day, and New Year's Eve. The change to that was we took out the day after Thanksgiving. Okay? Article six, page six, article 11, delete the language tying scheduling to the first 20 hours of duty per month to seniority as follows. So monthly work schedule for all employees shall be a minimum of 32 hours, of four hours, of four tours of duty per month, provided there are sufficient hours available for such scheduling. Each employee shall have, shall provide a minimum of 60 hours availability per month. Employees retain the right to mutually swap or switch a tour of duty. The in-house sergeant should be notified and approved of law pours after either switch for swap. Article eight is on uniforms, effective June 1st, each year, employees will receive the following amount for uniform maintenance, June 1st, 2017, $5.50; June 1st, 2018, $5.75; June 1st, 2019, $5.75; June 1st, 2020, $600. And we added a statement that employees shall be expected to properly maintain and clean their uniforms and shall maintain neat professional appearance while working. And this was signed by both myself and Bruce Ichetta, which is the, you know, which is the union representative, and agreed to and voted on by all members of the union. So I made a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement as of 7/25, backdated to June 1st for the purpose of this memorandum.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? All opposed? Excuse me, abstaining? Any other discussion? So Carrie, thank you. And I will sign, excuse me, there is one more part. I will read the resolution. Whereas, whereas, on July 25th, 2017, the village of Rhinebeck, the village board located in 76 East Market Street, Rhinebeck, have met and determined the following. Be resolved, July 25th, 2017, that the memorandum of agreement between the villages of Rhinebeck and the UPSU Part-Time Police Officers Unit covering the period from June 1st, 2017 through May 31st, 2021, is hereby approved, signed by Mayor Carrie Bassett, effective July 25th, 2017. Okay, thank you. Other business? Yes, we have one other thing that we recently added, Rick, and that was in regard to, I would like to have a short discussion about the sidewalks. Okay? We were going to compare...
Yes, a rough statement in terms of sidewalks. Let's think about something else already. So the situation is basically that our insurer has told us that our insurance rates will be going up because our sidewalks are hazardous. And there are at least two current lawsuits against the village on trip and fall cases. So at the request of our insurer, we've been...
Nymer.
Nymer, which is the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal. They've requested us to address the sidewalk trip hazards, and hopefully this will keep some kind of lid on our insurance increase. And they would like us to start with the bluestone sidewalks first. So the procedure will be that the superintendent of public works will first identify each trip hazard with a caution flag and a fluorescent paint marking. A, two, a violation notice or order to remedy will be hand-delivered to the owner's residence. Three, a violation notice or order to remedy will be certified mail to a residence, and then a 30-day period is required to make repairs or at least have arrangements to make repairs. Basically, sidewalks are the responsibility of homeowners according to section 98.1 of the village code, which I'm not going to read. Basically, the way this is going to work is that our superintendent of public works, John Fenton, is going to go out. We already have a map from the sidewalk study of what some of the worst sidewalks are. He will be doing, as it says, flag identification. At that moment, at that time, it's his desire to basically be able to walk up to the residence or the establishment and stick something under the door, talking about what's going on. People then receive a letter. And basically, John is available to help talk to people about how to remediate the trip hazards that they have. At this time, we're not talking about the replacement of an entire sidewalk or digging things up, but basically where stuff is either loose or askew, figuring out how to basically smooth that section back down. So this will be commencing, I believe, immediately. Over the next couple of months, we'll be looking, we'll be looking at this. So people should know that they, there's potential you'll receive these notices. It is village code that the sidewalks are the responsibility of the homeowners.
So the purpose of this is just to bring it up to everybody's attention. It's not a vote, it's not a change, it's really an enforcement of our existing code and trying to make our walkable community a better walkable community for everyone, you know, whether they live here permanently or visiting or whatever, and try to help improve that sidewalk issue that we currently have. And ultimately reduce our insurance rates, which are impacted because of sidewalk issues.
So we've been talking about this for about eight years.
So when there's... So can that be ever left?
When there's a tree that is uprooting a sidewalk...
Right.
Is the homeowner going to be able to cut the tree roots?
Well, I think that there are some, I think what John was suggesting is that there may be some ways to create and create a gently sloped...
Right.
I think we've been approaching the problem the wrong way.
Right.
To put it another word, we've been approaching it the most expensive way to go in and, you know, what to do with the tree, how to manage the tree, how to, you know, if we damage the tree and do the removing roots versus, you know, for one section of bluestone versus if you have two pending sections that you can now probably fill in at a much easier portion to create a bridge, so to speak, to get over that section, which is still EDA approved and allows for a non-tripping hazard to be able to fix that.
So my understanding, this was actually, and the insurance company was good with this approach, that's my understanding from John.
Well, long, yes, as long as we're eliminating the trip hazard, we don't have...
So what's going to happen is that certain sections of the sidewalk may not be completely leveled, they may have a slight rise and fall in them, but they'll be smooth.
How are you going to do that when you have two pieces of slate there?
I think they're going to, that's, they're going to want that.
Okay, we'll see.
I'm not an engineer.
Well, but, Harry, what is your proposal?
Well, I'm saying...
Did we leave trip hazards?
No, of course not. But you do have to cut the tree root, you know, in some places, I can take it right across the street after this meeting if you want. There's no way you're going to smooth over certain areas, you're going to have to cut the tree roots.
I think every case is going to be unique at some point. I think if that's your point, I think there's going to be unique situations, correct?
And I think, I think the other point is that we, that we really do want to work with the homeowners to try to, you know, minimize both the costs and the impacts. That's really the goal of how we're proceeding.
Well, what I'm trying to say is homeowners are confused on what to do because they don't know if they can cut the tree root because it's a, it's a street tree, it's in the right of way. We're going to have to talk to people like...
So, and we're anticipating calls from anybody who is involved with this to call our zoning enforcement officer, John Fenton, here at Village Hall, who is ready to work with any of these people to address these situations. So I do anticipate calls.
Okay.
Right, that we will have to work through.
Okay.
Is John going to keep a list of the houses that he put some notices and talks to?
Yes, yes.
Because that's...
He's going to have the survey, he's going to have a whole file?
And hopefully he'll share that too because that's what we're trying to ask him to ask.
Yeah, because I think you're going to get some of the calls, so you're prepared.
Yeah, this is a first step, so thank you.
Okay, so the last issue that I had on the, for correspondence is, we did receive a request from Anthony Fada, our, from our water plant operators, to, he's requesting a buyout of 100 hours of his vacation time as per unit agreement in article 12, section E. And Pat, did you verify that the $100 is available?
Yes, I did. He had 300, if I remember right, 325.25.
And we allow a maximum of 200 per year, is that the max? Is there a max that we allow?
I don't remember what the...
Just to make sure if the, I don't, we're not going over the max.
No, it's not.
Okay, it's not going over the max. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve Anthony Fada's request to buy out 100 hours of his vacation time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Discussion? Carrie, thank you. Any other business that anybody would like to bring up?
There's the letter on the school resource officers, or we do that some other time?
Yeah, that's, that's, that needs to be, that's a contract, you talked about the contract.
Yeah.
Between the school and the police, yes, we're going to have discussions and work through an agreement, and then we'll bring that back to the board.
Okay.
We're starting to set up those discussions. Haven't received that notice, yes. So that'll be at a later meeting.
We have the letter from the homeowner seeking relief on the late payment on your
Yeah, I came to the treasurer's office.
Are you there?
Yeah, if you can read it.
I'm writing to ask if you could remove, this is from Gail Speckham. I'm writing to ask if you could remove the late payment fee on our village tax bill. I've been out of the country since the beginning of May 2017. My husband left here to go to Singapore for six months to teach at the Culinary Institute of American School there at Singapore. After three weeks, he had a heart attack and became very ill. He was in the hospital for three months and we were, and we were air ambulanced to New York Presbyterian slash Columbia University Medical Center. I arrived, I've arrived home, have just gone through three months of mail. This is where I found our village tax bill, it was due July 1st. I was hoping you could remove the finance charge. I called the county real estate finance department to ask them to remove it, and they said it was up to the village tax office. I look forward to hearing from you and we'll pay the tax bill right away. Thanks, Gail P. Speckham.
First of all, do we have that power, really?
I have not looked this up, having just received this right prior to the meeting. I personally have not been able to investigate, see what limitations we have.
Yeah, I neither, but it seems like we have that ability.
It's the first time in 20 years I think I've ever heard of it, so...
So, I mean, my request is to postpone this, and I think we can handle this outside of the meeting and work with our treasurer and also work with legal to make sure that we...
We might have to, probably have to blow it on it.
We may, okay, yes, but if we do, then I think we should, we would have to postpone until our next meeting, to our next meeting.
You make, that's a motion, you're good.
It's not a...
Oh, we're making...
So you want to make a motion, it's just maybe...
What?
You don't even take a motion to postpone that, I think.
No, we're just, we're just wanting this discussion.
Yeah, we should.
Anything else, further business? Was there a tree, was there, do we have no tree issue, right?
We have a tree issue, but it's gone down to tree commission, something like that.
There was a red oak on Astor that they wanted to remove prior to the paving that was sent to all the board.
You know, that, I thought that was, it didn't look that sick. I know they're the experts, but...
They, they took a core, I think, on it. That was, the issue on that one was that it looks pretty good, but the core is...
Is rotted.
Is rotted.
It's too bad.
We're going to do it.
And they're going to pay for that? Yes.
Yeah.
I do believe we have to approve that tree. And there was pictures and...
That's right.
And everything was sent to the board in terms of, and their vote, and the tree commission voted...
A bunch of them said it was a good idea.
I think they all voted in favor of it. Voted in favor of removing. So we do have a recommendation by the tree committee to remove a red oak, that's on Astor.
Yes, it seemed to bypass me, but fair enough. Okay.
Is it a motion? So, I don't know if anybody's had a chance, I did go look at the tree, and you can, if you get close to it, it is, the core, the base of the tree is deteriorated to the point where it could be hazardous for a safety, a safety in a large storm. Again, it's not going, it's not intimate that it's going to fall down, I can never predict when a tree's going to fall, but this one is in a state of illness.
Right.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation by the tree commission to remove the large red oak on Astor prior to the start of our paving project, which will, if we wait later, would hinder that, could hinder that project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Carrie, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make note that our next village board meeting is being rescheduled to August 22nd at 7:00 here at Village Hall. And it's a little bit out of cycle, but we do have some scheduling conflicts that we are working around, and we will be having the next board meeting on August 22nd.
The first day of the fair.
Yes, I have, I have nothing for executive session, I have nothing for executive session this time, so I'm making a motion that we close the village board meeting for today, July 25th. I have a record basening time. Just in case our last meeting.
Yeah, but it's the second meeting of the month.
You know, first of all, it's great to have a working board, and when you have a working board and you have this much going on, I think that is, this is a sign of the fact that you guys are working in the best interest of the village, and I welcome John to our board, and I also commend everybody here to the effort that they're putting in because this, that's really what's happening. We're doing real work in representing the village, and it does take time, and I'd like to thank the villages and the residents patience as we work through some of these hard-to-do processes, but again, this is thank you to you guys.
You're welcome.
Right, all right, so motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Closed.
Thank you.